All right. Fortunately, we haven't had any executive sessions in the past few meetings. We have our consent agenda. We have bills to pay for July 3rd, 12th, and 13th. Any questions on those bills? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? Ms. Pedro, go ahead.
Thank you. So when we do the Sandy Point Water Testing under Recreation, do they take ambient readings? Do they come and they take the readings? Or do we have someone bring the water up to the place?
It's my understanding they come and take the readings.
They come and take the readings. So where do they take the readings? Is it like so far, so many feet offshore or at the shore?
That's a good question. I can get that to you. I don't know.
Okay. And I noticed that there's a lot of lease payments for vehicles this month. There are finance, police, fire, and animal control.
These are vehicles that have already been leased.
Right. So what are the vehicles under finance?
That's a good question. I'll get an answer to you. I don't know off the top of my head.
So now you have them under police and fire. And I knew we did that in the animal control. But I was wondering what the lease vehicles under finance were.
Maybe a new lease that's recorded under finance and will take care of that. Obviously, finance doesn't have their own views.
Okay. That's what's going to be my question. Thank you.
Mr. Kessin?
Yeah, seeing that we do have lease under finance, it must be that we're leasing computers, the server.
It says vehicles.
No, the server is not leased. That was bought. Copier? Copiers have a contract.
Oh, it says vehicles and IT, actually.
Do we have a motion to receive these and place them on file?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to one. Next up, we'll be sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. First up, we have a daily liquor license, Class F, for St. John's Lodge, Number One Corp. at 81 Sprague Street, for their annual clam bake, August 19th, 2018, from 12 to 4:00.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? They don't get the license if they don't bring in the insurance.
I just didn't see it at the bottom.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have peddler's license for a specific event. We have Firefly Yoga and Wellness Festival at Glen Park, September 15th.
So, Mr. President, I have a question. It's actually anybody who has the answer. I looked through the code books today. We only do peddler's licenses for vendors on town property?
So you have ice cream trucks or?
Ice cream trucks are licensed. But if Louis Escobar was going to do a wine tasting and had somebody do it, that would take a peddler. Well, we don't approve the license in the town reports? Okay. That's what I was just asking. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
So moved to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have Lovewell Farms Company, 6 Hammond Street in Providence, Rhode Island. Ms. Pedro?
So the next, I guess, three licenses, is this the new online format? So the only thing about this is we don't have the little box at the bottom where we see what kind of fee was paid when we get these.
We're in the process of getting it. We're still be able to process it yourself, just the council. So they will be able to see everything. Because if we, we're just trying to get it so that we can have everything on there. It's still a work in progress.
Yeah.
With regards to what we can print, what we can show you without showing everything.
Right. It would be nice to be able to, like we used to be able to see the fee that was paid or, you know, if they wanted it waived or whatever. And when it was paid.
Yep.
Yep.
They can't go, they can't go past submitting it until they pass. So they literally can't do, can't get this far.
Okay.
To us without having to pay them.
All right.
We're getting payment upfront before we're showing it to them.
Okay. So we just don't know the amount then?
Whatever the standard fee is for that specific license that's listed in the fee tables.
Thank you.
That you have to memorize now.
One more thing to do.
So we have one for Lovewell Farms Company, 6 Hammond Street, Providence, Rhode Island, and one for Chantel de Silver, 22 Cherry Lane in Tiverton, Rhode Island.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have annual peddler's license for InStyle 33 LLC, doing business as My Rolling Cafe, 265 Freeborn Street. And I believe that's Newport, correct?
No, that's Portsmouth.
Portsmouth, Freeborn Street, Portsmouth. Thank you. Habrel Incorporated, PO Box 1271, Millbrook, New York, and Blom Fine Foods, 630 Current Road, Fall River, Massachusetts.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Secondes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have minutes from the Town Council meeting of 7:09:18. Are any questions on the minutes? Done? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
I was absent.
You were not here. So motion passes six, zero, and one. We have tax vouchers of 2018, 07/23-01 to 2018, 07/23-04.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have the Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Rayner?
Good evening, Mr. President, Council, ladies and gentlemen. A quick update with regard to Coggeshaw School. The Aquidnic Island Christian Academy vacated the building on July 1st. The staff is now working on a plan for potential alternatives for the building. And actually, we have been looking, exploring possibilities for a while now. The building is on the list for the proposed material assessment by Jacobs Engineering, which you will consider tonight. And if approved, that would give us a good idea of its material condition. We will propose an interim plan tonight to have Recreation Department activities in the gym, since the north side of the building is still in relatively good condition. A working group composed of staff and stakeholders currently using the building for storage is considering potential alternatives for the building. And we plan to have recommendations for you later this summer on how to go forward based on the material assessment and private and public interest in its future use. For the next one regarding Melville Marine District. The Melville Marine District businesses hold a monthly meeting amongst themselves and have lately begun to invite participation from town and naval station staffs. The most recent meeting that we had was July 10th. These meetings are informative and have enhanced communication between all the Melville area stakeholders. An issue that I want to bring to your attention that is gaining in importance and priority is the continued viability of Stringham Road as the access corridor in and out of the district. The Navy owns the road, but has adopted a reduced maintenance philosophy for Stringham and Burma Roads. Burma is also known as Defense Highway. While no action is required or anticipated immediately, there will be a need for a better plan as time goes by. In the meantime, I've assured the Business District that we will work with all appropriate agencies and parties to support a better long-term plan for Stringham Road. With regard to Fire Department rolling stock, the Acting Chief has surveyed the status of our fire fleet and has made some recommendations for needed maintenance and repairs. We are currently addressing needed repairs to Engine Two, that's a reserve engine that has a significant oil leak and should be in service by the end of the month, and Ladder One, which has significant leaks in the pump, waterway, and ladder pipe, which Chief Cranston had scheduled for maintenance prior to his departure. Though we still have some issues, we are, though we have some issues, we are still answering all calls for incidents and there's no delay in service. However, our biggest concern right now is rescue number one, an ambulance vehicle. It is beyond economical repair and will be decommissioned. We have reached out to the Portsmouth Volunteer Association, who are willing to help the town finance a replacement vehicle. I will work with the Finance Director and the Acting Chief to develop a course of action to be recommended to you at our next council meeting. With regards to the police construction milestones this period, roof sheathing material is being installed. Rough mechanical plumbing, electrical, and fire protection work is underway. And interior masonry walls are still being erected. Over the next three weeks, brick face, first floor partitions, siding, and trim work will begin. We're approximately 50% complete with the project. The project remains within budget and the new building is still on track for substantial completion on time in October. And then lastly, this was decided after we had submitted the agenda. The Prevention Coalition has selected a new part-time Prevention Coalition Coordinator. His name is Corey Sylvia. He is a University of Rhode Island graduate and will graduate with a Master's in Public Administration from Suffolk University in December. He has worked as a Health Studies Research Assistant, been a member of America Corps, and is a strategic consultant for the Boys and Girls Club of Boston. We look forward to working with him in the future. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Rayner? Mr. Kessin?
Anyone, it's the police building. We're at 50% complete and that will show in the paperwork in the next report.
Correct. You have, your first meeting in August is canceled. So what I'll do is I'll make sure that I send that out to you as soon as we have that information gathered and then we can discuss it at the next agenda.
And have we lost a month? Because substantial completion, I thought was supposed to be September 31st according, or 29th by the original plan?
If you recall during the winter, the, they lost a lot of time during the winter. They tried to make that up and they have been making it up through resequencing some work. But the substantial completion and the subsequent teardown of the old police station was always October, November timeframe.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Pedro?
For the Coggeshaw School, you said that you had the staff or a team looking into alternatives?
Yeah. We have staff department heads. And there's a number of organizations that store the equipment in the Coggeshaw Building right now. So this would be the Little Leagues, the baseball leagues, Pop Warner Football Theater Group. I think those are the three main ones right now. And those are all part of the process right now of trying to develop alternatives for the building. And a recommendation to the council as to what direction we should take with regard to its future.
So that's, that was going to be my question. Who are the people that are looking into these alternatives?
Specifically, it's myself, Mr. Thalipski, our Business Development Director. As needed, we bring in our Finance Director, Planning Officer, DPW Director, and then all the heads of the leagues that are storing equipment in the building. And there is two women from the theater group.
Okay. No citizens?
Those are citizens.
Well, not, not really. Department heads?
I take it that that's our job to come to you with a recommendation. Any other questions?
Just one quick one. Is there a price to mothball being considered just?
Yeah, so one of the things we'll take a look at.
Not as an alternative, but to see if it fits in the budget.
Yeah, that, it would be prohibitive right now. This would be something that we would discuss. There was a report that was done, I believe it was 11 years ago. And back then, it was, it was too expensive to mothball back then. The decision was made and we have still adhered to. The south end of the building, with the exception of the thrift shop, which has been open, has been essentially mothballed. But that's where all this stuff is being stored. When the Christian Academy used the area for the thrift store, that was without utilities. So that's why their hours were limited. So there's no utilities. There's no heat, no air conditioning. There's only water at the south end of the building. But the north end of the building is still viable and it has functioning furnaces, water, electricity, but no AC.
I think that the thrift shop actually does have heat and they installed a small propane heater to service it to keep it warm.
That may be it. I'm unaware.
I can tell you the Little League area is freezing from past experience. Any other questions?
No, sir.
All right. Onto resignations and appointments. We have a resignation from the citizens interested in the Comprehensive Community Planning Process Committee for Mr. Bob Andrews.
Motion to accept with regrets Robert Andrews' resignation.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have an appointment to the Dog Park Committee for Mr. Jack Hay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have a reappointment to the Economic Development Committee for Mr. Ray Keller.
Raymond Keller. Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And a reappointment to the Melville Park Committee for Mr. Jeffrey Richard.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Old Business Number One, Discussion and Action, request permission to move the Kevin Madeira's memorial bench from Sandy Point Beach to a spot on the path to the dock at the Glen Manor House. Mrs. Wilcox is here? No. The original bench that we approved last year was put down on Sandy Point Beach. And due to winter storms and the wind and the breeze, it's been almost buried underneath the sand. So the family has requested that they move it up to a higher location down at Glen by a path overlooking the dock at the Manor House.
Motion to move the bench, subject to, that it's possible to be done.
Second.
Staff will check to make sure that CRMC or anybody doesn't have any issues with it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Have a question on that?
Sure. Listen.
Are we going to remove the existing footings that are buried in the sand for safety purposes?
Mr. Woodhead, is that possible to remove the concrete footing that we put in for the bench?
Thank you.
Next up, we had scheduled a public hearing to propose amendments to the zoning map for the Borden property on East Main Road. It's my understanding that the zoning board did not act on anything last week.
Yes.
So we would like to table this.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you could continue it, since it's an advertised public hearing. We made considerable progress on the zoning hearing on July 19th, but are not quite done. So if you could continue the public hearing to August, to your next meeting of August 27, that would be very helpful.
Motion to continue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Old Business Number Three, Discussion and Action, request authorization to enter an agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group to provide facility conditions assessment. Mr. Rayner?
Yes, Mr. President, Council. What we're requesting here is an authorization to enter into an agreement with Jacobs Engineering. Jacobs Engineering is the firm that the state RFP'd and contracted with to do the assessment of all our schools in Rhode Island. This is an initiative that we have worked together with Middletown to get a better bang for our buck. Middletown is doing the exact same project, assessing all of the town properties. What we want to do is get an apples-to-apples study, the same kind of format, the same kind of matrix that Jacobs had done for the schools. We would like that done for town properties. So that that would be the foundation for us developing a more coherent, prioritized, and articulate capital improvement plan.
So all the town properties, town hall? I don't think we have to do the police station, I hope.
The police station is the only one left off, but.
DPW.
Everything.
Barnes.
Correct.
I guess we can do the.
We will do Glen Manor House. We'll do Brown House, the Stables, the Phelps House, all town buildings.
Motion to authorize entering into an agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group to provide facility condition assessment services?
Seconded.
Any discussion?
I have one. We just had that done a couple of years ago, didn't we?
Yeah.
I wasn't on the council and never saw that original condition report.
We've not had one since I've been here in three years. We did have an assessment of some buildings, but not all buildings. And a lot of that was work that was done by the staff.
Okay. I thought we hired somebody.
We did hire.
We did.
A group to do the electrical survey. I don't think we did a full facility survey. We had.
Well, I mean, there was some, there was somebody that realized that the middle school's power panels were at risk, great, but that was.
But that was, the school department did that.
That was, was that Jacobs?
RDW or Jacobs did that? Jacobs did schools?
But Jacobs did the schools, but that was the recent one. If you're talking about a historical survey, I don't know who did that.
The next question I have is, um, this is, this is, is this going to change the budget number on expenditures for the $30,000?
By a hundred and.
Are we not going to do a CPI that we've already approved?
It's almost identical. I'd have to take a look, but I think it's within $100 of what we had projected.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Old Business Number Four, Monthly Finance Report. Ms. Mills?
Sorry. Honorable Counsel, attached is the budget update for June 2018. This update represents 98% of the current fiscal year. Overall revenues are ahead of where we were last year's budget production. Expenditures are at 97% of the budget production. There are no significant wire or ACH transfers to report.
Questions from Ms. Mills? Or Mr. Rayner?
We originally were thinking there was a $2 million surplus?
$2 million.
$200,000? I'm off digits. I've been in Maine.
That's a big digit.
I'm in Maine, the count of my fingers.
I can't really speculate on the future invoices coming in, but I believe it's going to be around six figures. I mean, in the, you know, lower to mid-range.
So you're comfortable with the $200,000 that Mr. Kessin mentioned?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not the $2 million.
If it was $2 million, we really did a poor job of budgeting last year. And I guess this is more of a question from Matt. How do you think, how much of this fiscal year's revenue came in early from quote-unquote people trying to avoid taxes at the end of next year? Or the end of last year? Do you think that we might be missing?
2%. I think that's what we thought. At the end of the fiscal year here, that we had approximately $65,000 that came in because of the new income tax laws. That was from deferred revenue and it's already in for the 2018 numbers.
So you calculated that as the percentage we're not going to collect this year?
We can't hear.
Sorry. It was $65,000 on the deferred revenue. No, it was collected last year. It was just paid in advance.
Correct. But you've accounted for that in this budget that we started two weeks ago? Three weeks ago now?
Yes.
Okay. So the answer was it was about $65,000 that people paid in advance of the July 1st, excuse me, January 1st?
The trouble was they paid in January and we couldn't calculate it out in anticipation. But once June came and the deferred revenue was.
It's not a big number. That's, that was my main concern. Okay. Any other questions on the report?
Motion to receive and place on file?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Old Business Number Five, Breakdown of Special Revenue Funds Requested by the Town Council. Mr. Kessin?
Right. And I've talked with Mrs. Mills on this. I want to make this as simple as it started out to be. Page five of the original bills from that month. We had a Town of Bristol build the Town of Portsmouth for the repairs on the docks. And I noticed it was against the Department of Reserve and Special Funds. And the original question, which they didn't get an answer on, and maybe they didn't understand the question, turned into a motion by myself to get a full report of the Special Reserve Funds. I've talked with Ms. Mills again tonight to show her the original page and she said, thinks she has an answer.
Yes. I'll take care of that for next Town Council meeting.
So we don't know if it should have went?
I'll have to look into it.
Let me, let me tell you what I think. Because I've stated it over a couple of meetings, two to be exact. In February 13th, on page six, the minutes, this council did a memorandum, had a discussion of a memorandum and an agreement of the Town of Portsmouth and the Town of Bristol. And we decided through a bond, through a vote of this council, where that money would come from.
Actually, that's jogging memory. I already know where that goes.
And that's the reason I questioned Department of Reserve. Because that was either to come out of.
But that's the words originally.
Either Brian's Prudence Island bond money.
I already know what they are.
And the bond council didn't, we don't know if they approved it.
It's, I've seen him remember this. This was to come out of the bond money for the Rhode Island, or the Prudence Island paving, if it was, if it was okay to do that. If not, then it was to come out of, I believe, the contingency fund.
Contingency fund, correct.
Correct.
So again, on this, this 618, 2018 bill, it's Bill LT 625. It has it coming out of Special Revenue Funds. And I believe that's wrong for $59,900. So I'm looking forward to a response from you at the next meeting. Thank you.
So is that why we got this combining balance sheet in our packet that's not labeled for OB5? But it's the Special Funds?
Yeah, those are the Special Funds. We had talked about those previous times.
So my question, so do, so when it says due from other funds on that sheet, and you look under the fund, that means that there was money in, say, I don't know, number 36, PPD Commemorative. And it says due from other funds, 1,361. So in other words, instead of the money being in cash, it got borrowed and it's due from somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay. So.
I would have to look at what fund it was.
Okay. Okay, so that's what's gonna be my next quest- next question. Is it, I owe you from the fund balance?
But you- I'm not sure what- 'cause you might have to look all the way across, 'cause most of it's, I don't think it's all unearned. What fund number were you in reference to?
Thirty-six.
Well, I mean, that's just a for- for instance. So I just wanted to understand what due from other funds means. And that means that there should be that in cash, but it got borrowed somewhere-
Correct.
And it's from a- okay. So that's what all of that whole line-
Not necessarily-
For each fund is.
Not necessarily an absolute statement there. For instance, we had a couple, well, a couple funds that were not necessarily posted in the right way. But I don't see a lot of due-to funds.
Oh, I see several. I see from the 26, 30, 31, 36, 42, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 57, 58, 59, 68, and 70. And my other question is, where are number 12, the Sherman Trust, and 13 Cemetery Funds?
She's at the top.
It's 27, 25, the Sherman Fund.
Those are not special revenue funds.
Yeah, those were-
They're not?
We'll take a look, because I remember in the last memo that was submitted to the council, those were listed as special funds. So we obviously do still have the cemetery fund and the Sherman Trust fund.
Okay.
So we'll have to get that too.
Yeah, 'cause that's a substantial amount of money.
Yeah.
And, yeah, because I'm looking at the sheet that was handed out in April of 2017. It's the same special funds, only they're just in a different format.
Correct.
And, um, yeah, so that's-
Correct.
Because I, you know, to me, if the money is in the fund, it would be in the cash line. Correct? But it's not in the fund. It's supposed to be in the fund, but it's due from other funds. So, and there's a lot of them. Probably at least a hundred thousand, maybe 150,000.
Most of these balances go well back, more than 12 months. So, I mean, it would take a lot of investigative work for me to look through all those, but your conclusion is right. I mean, it's either, you know, it's either cash, or due from government, or due from other funds. I mean, it's-
Yeah, I wasn't counting the due from government, because I understand what that is. That's just like CBD, C- I always call that the wrong thing. I always think of CBGs.
CBGs.
CDBGs. That we haven't got that yet, so it's due from governments. I get that, but it's the due from other funds that I'm looking at.
Would you like me to ask about that?
Okay, so we're gonna get more- more to come, right?
To help with-
Yes.
Another time, okay.
To help with the discussion, it's pages 133 through 148 in the 2017 audit. That has the names of the- that has the names of the existing accounts, like the fund number 30, which is the PPD, Mini Grant, Care Mini Grant, last year. And I'm only going by the balance, it was 74 dollars. Used to be the Clerks Fund, and this year it's not. So there's- there are some discrepancies, and hopefully we can get that squared away.
Oh, yeah, that's- that's another question.
Just by looking at balances.
Now that I, now that Mr. Kessin mentioned that, like number 56, that used to be Lower Glen Farm. Yeah, 56 was Lower Glen Farm, and now that's Veterans Wall. So I'm wondering-
Well, I took these right off the financials that were issued last year, so-
Well, last year it was Lower Glen. I don't know.
Well, the actual issue financials, but I can look into the descriptions. Some of the descriptions were- there was a handful of them that were either incorrect on the financials or on the general ledger. There was not a- for the most part, most of them were the same.
Right. They match up, though, from the 17 and the 16. And then there's one in 15 as well. I have all three. So, anyway, we'll talk about it again.
Hi.
So you wanna receive this and place on a file, or you wanna table it to the next meeting?
I think it needs to be tabled to the next meeting until we iron out-
Yes, it needs to do more work.
Is that your motion?
Some discrepancies.
Okay, in a second. Thank you, Mr. Cleason. Any further questions? All those in favor? Aye?
Thank you.
Opposed? Motion passes seven.
To zero.
To zero. That was an approval, okay. New business number one, discussion request for an identification sign to be placed at Legion Park for the Portsmouth Garden Club. Anybody have any questions? The Garden Club would like to place a sign up front. It looks just like all the other signs in town. And you just want us to say yes.
I would say motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have a request for approval of Glen Farm Special Events Fields for application for Bull Frog Fit, Jeremiah O'Connor, to Aspinet Road, Middletown, to use the lawn area at the Glen- excuse me, at the Brown House for mobile fitness camp every Saturday in September from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. Ms. Bill? She- what? There she is. We're all good. My only concern with this, and I guess Brian, if you've checked it out, is obviously back behind there. It is the septic system. We don't wanna be spiking anything into the septic system, but other than that, I think it's a great idea.
I did discuss that with him. He knows about that. There won't be any heavy equipment on there at all.
Perfect. Or tents put up into it, or things like that.
No, not at all.
Ms. Pedro.
So he will not be using the Brown House facilities, it says. So what about the restrooms?
No.
Where are people going to use the restrooms?
I believe, he says he doesn't need them.
Well, I think they need them.
There's a handful of porta-johns there.
It's an hour?
Yes, it's an hour, four to five on Saturdays.
Hmm. I don't know.
There's generally speaking, three or four porta-johns laying around, hopefully standing up.
Oh, there are?
Yeah.
They're always-
Babe Ruth keeps one there all the time.
Oh, I didn't know they were always there.
And there's usually, there's some at DePaulo, and there's a few up at the- by the shed for soccer and lacrosse.
I didn't know they stayed there.
Unfortunately, yeah, until November 1st sometime. And that's when it usually gets taken up. So it's usually from like March 1st to November 1st, or somewhere in that timeframe. So we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Don't put away. Next, we have a request for approval to use Cockshill School, also known as the Christian Academy property, for after-school, excuse me, after childcare program that will run after kids get out of school. I guess I can't call it an after-school program, right? This fall, Monday through Friday, from 2:45 to 6:00 p.m. for grades K through eight. This fall?
Yes, Your Honorable Counsel, I would like to request the use of the Cockshill School for the program. Common Fence Point Center is closing down for renovations. They've asked me to take on their 25 participants. My plan is to increase enrollment from 25 to 40 or more this fall. The program will run Monday through Friday, 2:45, like you said, to 6:00 p.m. Grades K through eight are welcome to join. I have proposed a fee schedule which is comparable to the fees at the Newport County Y and Alphabet.
And are you gonna work with the school department and busing to get kids dropped off there, or you'll-
Yes.
Great. I think it's a wonderful idea. Ms. Kessin?
Thank you. Mr. President, how long is this gonna last?
This would go to the end of the school year.
So this would go through the winter?
Yes.
With the requisite breaks of the school breaks, so not during Christmas break, or February break, or-
Yes, but yes, I would, absolutely.
You would get vacation when they get vacation?
Yes.
Okay.
So we just had Mr. Rayner report out that we're going through some sort of a use of Cockshill School and updates, and yet we have a potential for not the school program. And this is obviously gonna be the gym?
Yes.
And is this program gonna cover the utilities?
If you look at the cost, we did a cost comparison between what a- the Christian Academy has been paying in their lease, and what the potential revenue is from this program. And it exceeds it by about an order of five, I believe. So it's enough to pay for the utilities.
Enough to pay for the heating utilities? I think it's a- I think it's a great use for the building. I just don't know if we should have government competing against businesses in this area. There's a brand-new after-school program in St. Mary's. And I think we put him at a disadvantage if in fact, you know, they're not held to the same standards. I wished it wasn't on tonight's meeting without understanding all the ins and outs of it, because it seems that our school department thought that the building was quite a burden to heat when they had it. So-
On the other hand, you're gonna be taking kids who are already going to the Common Fence Point Community Center.
Yeah, you may not lose them, 'cause they're at the other end of town. I mean, if there's gonna be fallout, there's gonna be- there's gonna be a gain from it too.
The building has to be heated anyway to the pleasantries, so. All set, Mr. Kessin?
I'm all set, Mr. Kessin.
Okay. Ms. Pedro?
Thank you. Um, okay. So this is temporary until Common Fence Point is through with their renovations?
Well, I hope to grow the program and have, you know, the 25 children would return to Common Fence Point, and then hopefully we have grown the program for other children.
So it's not temporary until Common Fence Point gets the renovations done? So you're just taking the Common Fence Point kids? You're not just taking the Common Fence Point kids?
Right, it would be open to everybody.
Okay. Because it was my un-
Wendy, when you speak, can you just pull the microphone a little bit closer so I can hear you back?
Sure.
Thank you.
It was my understanding that the Common Fence Point had contacted the YMCA and had a private arrangement with them, and they had- they used their staff for this- for their program?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so what staff are you going to use?
I am using our beach staff that are seniors in high school.
So this is gonna be town employees? So, um, and we're gonna be paying the utilities? And Mr. Rayner is confident that this is going to cover the electric, the water, the paying of the staff, the janitorial services?
Yeah, this is, we're only talking a short amount of time per day, just about three hours a day. And the- we've run the- we've had the business director sit down with the recreation director and work out a business plan that would make sure we had covered the utilities and the services that were required. This started out as a discussion of what are we gonna do for the children that don't have Common Fence Point, and it's grown to we have a possibility to create a kids' club environment that would cater to those children and possibly grow the recreation department.
So you're looking to start a daycare program through the town, basically?
I wouldn't call it daycare. This is- this is after-school for kids.
Right, but that's daycare, basically. It appears as if it's a daycare service.
I- to me, it replaces, exactly, pay, for youth that we had for years.
Well, that's right, but they used private people, I think they had the YMCA, and-
They paid- they paid kids from the high school or from in-town who just graduated, same as this would be. And it was paid for by the participants.
So will you be following- so you won't be following guidelines for licensed daycare, then?
We are going to look into that. If it's required, yes.
You will?
Yes.
Yes. So do you have a daycare license?
Not- not as of yet. We are talking about it. Rich and I have spoke about it.
Is the building licensed for daycare?
Right now, this is just a kids' club idea. If we can get permission from the council to go- move forward with this, then we will refine. We've been discussing this with the solicitor, and the appropriate agents- the appropriate agencies, and depending on the demand, we will ensure that we get the appropriate licensing and certifications.
So I take it that the building is not licensed for daycare?
Well, it was licensed as a school. I mean, it's just-
Yeah, but that's different. And it wasn't a- I mean, we have-
It's the same space, it's the same space that they used to do the pay.
And it's also the same age range that the Christian Academy had in there from K to twelve.
Yeah, I know, but that was different. That was a private organization. This is a town now. This is the town. It's a public arrangement. It's not a private arrangement anymore. What's- I'd like to know what the town's liability for that would be? What's the town's responsibility for upgrading the building? I'd really like some more information. As Mr. Kessin was talking about, I really would like to have seen a spreadsheet with cost-benefit analysis, and just would like to get more information.
Mr. Cleason, you have a question?
My only question was regarding the heating system. Obviously, you need to keep it above a certain degree, you know, the whole building, but you would want something that's bearable in that. And I didn't know if you have to heat the whole school, or whether it's zoned independently for the gym, you know? Because it doesn't make sense to have this class and heat the whole building to 68 degrees.
Turn your mic up just a little bit, I'm sorry, for his old folks back here.
It's part of the acoustics. I'm talking right into the microphone, it's part of the acoustics here, sorry.
Just talk into it, maybe, I don't mind.
Okay. You want me to repeat that? Okay. My question is whether the building has zoning in there so that we aren't heating the whole school. That's all. I believe there's three furnaces, and it is zoned. Thank you.
Ms. Sujifus?
I guess what we're looking at here are a group of children who are currently going to be displaced because of the Common Fence Point closure. And those are Portsmouth kids. And we have a piece of property, whether we like it or not, that belongs to the town that's currently unoccupied. And I believe that it makes sense for us to explore the possibility of both taking care of the Portsmouth resident children in a Portsmouth-owned building in an after-school club, just like pay existed many years. And while you might have questions about obtaining proper licenses, I assume that nothing will go forward without having proper licenses and insurance, and that the cost-benefit analysis shows that this is something that will benefit the town. And it certainly will benefit us to not have that building simply empty. And if it has been reviewed by staff, I believe that it's something that would- should be moved forward. And of course, all these things are conditional on getting the proper legal requirements met. And so I would move to approve the request to have the Portsmouth Recreation Department run the after-school kids' club, and I would be in favor of it.
Ms. Sarah, a second?
So, second. Can I ask if you just add to your motion that you add all those contingencies, that we meet all the license requirements, et cetera?
I thought those were in the motion, but yes.
Ms. Taggert?
Well, I would've followed up with, you know, deferring this to the town administrator to follow through and make sure that we receive all the licenses, and that if it is viable and it's in the town's best interest that we do move forward with it. If it comes back that we can't get the licenses, or maybe something with the cost benefit doesn't work out, well, then we don't move forward. But I think it is, as Ms. Sujifus had mentioned, it's in our- it's in our best interest to try to make use of that facility, and if it's favorable, I think we should move forward with it, at least for the- at least for the next year, until something comes out of the recommendations of the plan and whatnot. At least it gives us a stopgap for a year, and we have somebody in the building.
I move the question.
Any further discussion?
I think it absolutely makes sense to use a vacant building. I think it absolutely makes sense to support the Common Fence Point community. I don't know that it makes sense that government competes against businesses that are doing this on their own. And I will end my conversation there.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the kids' club program at Cockshill? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, one and one. Six, one and one. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up, we have five, one and one. Five, one and one, sorry. Bad math. The clerk would've fixed it. Liz voted twice. Our next two discussions, so Ms. Pedro asked to put on Shoreline- Our next two discussions, so Ms. Pedro asked to put on Shoreline Maintenance and then also we got her a letter from Common Fence Point, so-
I would like to move to combine New B four and five.
Thank you, that was going to be my suggestion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, so we're going to hear both four and five at the same time, which are basically the same discussion, so Ms. Pedro, you want to start?
Thank you. I put this on the agenda because someone called me about problems in their neighborhood and I think it's a coincidence that then, that the next item, New B five, is the same issue and it indicates that probably this issue could be getting out of control. And a lot of people are here tonight, I think, to speak about the ongoing problems, so I'd like to take some time and hear them and properly address their concerns. I just, you know, there are, there are lots of areas around town, it was, it's not just the person that called me, but, you know, I live in Island Park and we are inundated with people in the summer and, you know, there's some, there's a lot of questions, there's the trash, there's the parking, there's speeding, there's public urination, whatever, it's the same, it's the same thing that Newport gets, actually, only it's going on in neighborhoods now. So, anyway, I'd just like to hear what people have to say and see what we can do.
Okay. Any, council have any comments, questions or concerns at this point? If not, anybody who would like to get up and speak to either the Common Fence Point situation or any other public areas in town, please do so.
Hi, I'm Stacy Patterson, I called Liz, we had a nice conversation, so I think what she's saying-
Just do me a favor and just, I, it's, address as well, I'm sorry.
Oh, we live at Brant Road, the Pheasant Hill Community, off of Bristol Ferry Road. We have bought the Newport Beach Club and I believe you guys are here today, aye? Oh, speak into the, I see, I, I'm guilty too. So, what's going on is, I think it's, it is an issue, like Liz said, across all of Portsmouth. In our issue, in our area, it might be slightly different because our right-of-way access is actually owned by the Newport Beach Club. But, so, what we are seeing is increase since I've moved into the neighborhood of speeding people, you should see the toilet paper everywhere, the trash, so we're getting tired of it and coming all hours and so what, what we're proposing, at least for our neighborhood, is that part of the agreement was that there would be only 10 spaces and we see sometimes 30, 40 spaces. It's too much, our neighborhood can't handle it, we're not a beach, we're a right-of-way access, there are no facilities, they're not supposed to be, we're a neighborhood. So, the thing is, it's an unmonitored beach, that's the issue, so they come from, I usually ask, where are you from, Pawtucket, Providence, it's not monitored, I doubt many of them, and I know this is an accusation, have fishing licenses, there's no monitoring, they're there from dawn to dusk, sometimes past. I don't have a problem with being people burying on the beach, but pick up your trash and don't speed through my neighborhood. So, that's, that's the problem, how do you control? In our neighborhood, the answer is get the spaces down to 10, the way it was designed by CRMC. How do you do it? I think the Newport Beach Club made an effort, but people move rocks, things like that, so we need to come to an agreement, maybe bigger signs, maybe the police come in and ticket, we had an incident a couple of weeks ago, there was a pregnant lady that was overheating on the beach, the fire department could not get down because of all the cars, the Newport Beach Club was very helpful and loaned their, their golf carts to get to the woman, so that's another problem. And so, things are getting worse and worse every year, we were here a couple of years ago, same issue. Our neighborhood, you can't have speed bumps because it's the hill, so I'm happy to have a speed bump in front of my house to stop them from getting the running speed up the hill, I'd love to talk about that. I know you need signs, fine. So, another thing is if we enforce, if we start enforcing the 10 spots in the area, we're afraid they're going to come into our neighborhood and start parking there, so we want, I'm happy to put it on my property, no parking, ticketing, tow-away zone, you know, so those, this, we can come up with a comprehensive thing, but we need to come up with something because it's just going to exacerbate more and more. The, the word is out, people are coming from all over, there's no rules, they can do what they want, a friend of ours was walking their dog and they rolled in human poop, you know, it's, it's getting bad, we walk through and it's just, it's disgusting and we pick up trash all the time. And when we talk to the people and try to be civil, we constantly say, please pick up your trash, oh, it's not us, it's never them, so it's really for us, it's a, it's an economy of scale, how do we keep it down? That's the way CRMC wanted it, let's enforce it. And if we call police, police, I know you have a lot on your plate, common ticket, but we need better signage, so I don't, I don't know what the next steps are, but we have to start talking about it and it's probably an iterative thing. And I'm just one person from the neighborhood, so I'm sure other people have things to say, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come back, tell Cole away. Ms. Kessin?
This is a CRMC-recognized-
Right-of-way access. And my husband actually has a, the plan.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a town-owned one?
Mm-mm.
I mean, they're all town-owned, but then there's sanctioned by CRMC.
This is not town, it's part of, it was part of the-
Agreement.
Agreement with this, with-
CRMC, they were granted certain, certain things if they did certain things and they've made the attempt, we just need to get it across the goal line, I know they're experiencing the same issues, it's a matter of how to get it, how to get it there.
I was at the CRMC meeting when it was approved.
Okay, so you know.
Special Area Management and-
How many parking?
My record election was 17 parking spaces.
Nope, it's 10, we have the thing right here.
And they were also supposed to take care of the trash and, very vividly, now, this was Mr. O'Neill, so it's a little while back, said he would take care of not only putting porta-johns down there, but he said he would use the good trailers.
Right, so, so a lot of things that are on the map, it says must-have kayak rack, must-have porta-potties, which I think later got approved, they didn't want to see them, so they were going to make this great facility with bathrooms. The thing is, if you invite the bathrooms now with it getting out of control and not enforcing the parking spaces, it's just going to be that more tempting. I say get the numbers down to the 10, which is agreed upon, which is in, we have the map, it's, that's absolutely is 10. Give two, two handicapped, I think you need two handicapped and then eight rest, enforce it, that's what needs to be done, then we can add in the porta-potties as they promised and was agreed to because they were given special dispenations on doing things like building the big berms and getting all of their things that they could do to build their group, then they need to give that back and we've talked about that, so, but how we do it in stages is important because if you don't mitigate the volumes of people and start ticketing and telling them and mitigating them from coming, then you put the toilets in there and it's going to be like, woo-hoo, keep coming, so, you know, what are you going to do? So-
I agree, I, I live across the street, walk down there all the time.
Yeah, so, and it's, during the weekday, it's lovely, it's the weekends and holiday weekends, it just goes crazy and the fish hooks and the, it's just, it's, it's pretty gross.
And I, I discussed this earlier today with Mr. Rayner and I, we need to investigate because I don't know what our rules are for overnight camping because there were multiple tents set up 4th of July weekend and 4th of July.
Mm-hmm.
And again, like you said, there's no sanitary facility, so off in the bushes they go, hopefully.
Yeah, it's gross, I don't want to walk back there, but the amount of toilet paper dolloped across is just, it's, you know, we try to pick things up, but I'm not picking that up, but, you know, we have to use, we have to use rubber gloves when we do the big cleanups and so it, people come in and descend and do cleanups twice or once a year and it's just not fair to put people through that. We're not, you know, we want everybody to enjoy things, but it's economy of scale, we can't invite everybody, if you want to have a party in your house, you're not going to invite 3,000 people, you know, you just can't, we can't handle it, it's too much for our neighborhood, we're not a beach, you know, it's not the facility, so. It's a matter of how we, I think we need to do it in scale, too, if we would mitigate and eliminate the parking, bring it down to what it was agreed upon, 10 spaces, then I'm, I'm a border to that, I'm right where the railroad is, they cut back the railroad, you know, people are going to start parking there. So, we need signs where the railroad sign is to say no parking, tow-away zone, so that people will get the idea not to park in our neighborhood, first come, first served and not wimpy little signs, you guys tried, but they just rip them down and they move the boulders, you need big boulders, it, it's just human nature, that's just what happens, they're trying, it's just, we need to get it across the goal line, it's getting worse. Is that it? Is that, do anybody else have a question? Any questions?
Sorry.
Well, I, I think, I know the town can only enforce so much within the town right-of-way. I guess we could look to DEM and CRMC and see what enforcement options are out there, I mean, has anybody-
I'd love for them to come up and just start walking around asking for ticket licenses and I'm sure, I mean, for-
But I mean, that might be an option, to your knowledge, nobody's, nobody's reached out to DEM.
I think DEM's been out there once.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they do have enforcement divisions.
I could call them and say, come, come, come every weekend, we could, we could start, you know, if I, if you have a direct contact, I'd be happy to call them.
You do not.
Yeah, so.
But I, I agree, I think there's probably something we need to look at, ways to ramp up the enforcement, see what, see what we're allowed to do.
And I know it affected the, the fire department, you know, like, talk to them, I know it went up the chain because that, that, they couldn't get in there, you know, so.
Okay.
Unlike the Common Fence Point neighborhood, though, this is private property, so I'm not sure that the town has-
Well, if we call the police-
We only have, we only have enforcement on our local roads and neighborhoods, once you get onto the beach-
And that's not, that's not a lo, that's not our local road, that's the thing.
And neither are the rocks out in Common Fence Point.
Well, that's what I was going to, I was going to segue into that, yeah.
So, then how, when, like, can the police ticket on a private road? Are they, yeah, so that's the issue, so.
That is the issue. So, that's why I have in my backup is working with other entities, like, we need to work with the Newport Beach Club, too.
I, I think one thing that could be done down there is possibly better defining the parking spaces, I mean, you have the, I don't know, six or, or so that are relatively defined, but along the edge of the roadway, somewhat of free-for-all, you're right there.
Oh, yeah, we keep moving the rocks back, they keep sliding them back, I mean, it's just human nature, it's, I've come here, I'm going to, I'm going to hang out and I can park here, so. I, I'm not sure, I'd, I'd love for us all to sit there. Well, no, they're asking me questions, they told me. We're married, so we can, that's how we roll.
That way, there you go. Ports, ports, yep.
And it only claims for 10 spaces, this was designed by CRMC, so.
I believe there were seven along the road, I think. I remember being with- What you need to see is the, we need to see the approved plan, though, there's probably, this might, do you know if this is the approved one?
This is what they gave me here.
At the town hall?
Yeah, what's his name in the, in the office?
But no, there would, there would be-
Gary Crossby?
Gary and Michael. Yeah.
There, there should be a permit and an ascent associated with it, we, I mean, we can find that out, I think we can-
This is what I was handed, so.
No, but I think you can look online.
Do you know who gave him that?
I think we can look it up.
So, everything she said, I'm Ross Landy, too, Brant, I'm her husband, I'm sure there's a lot, I think we got two neighborhoods that are having the same issues and I know they're going to talk about that one next, but-
Oh, several neighborhoods, it's just that they're not all here.
We talked about it in the neighborhood on, a lot of different ways to try to curb a lot of different things and the speeding is the biggest problem in the neighborhood because they're all speeding to get down there, excited, whatever it is. And the other problem is the trash and the urinating and the defecating and the, in the, in the rush, because there's no facilities. And if you put more dumpsters or more trash, it's just going to account for more people, but if, the easiest way to mitigate the problem is just to stick to what was approved by CRMC and the, and the, and the beach club. If it's only approved for 10, then it was, if it was regulated at that, I think most of the problems, if not all of them, would go away. So, that's basically what I think should be, should be enforced.
At the meeting, I, I remember 17, which I know, I know, it says 10 in that one area.
Yep, and it shows no other parking on that whole road, it's just an access road, except for a turnaround at the bottom.
Well, there's handicap at the end.
Yep.
And it does say, it doesn't say the number, but it does say roadside.
It says 10, it says 10 on there.
But it also says roadside on there someplace, too.
Now, if you look at it closely, it says 10.
Oh, I know, 10-
It says access road, it says access road to the turnaround and it says there's one parking at the end of the turnaround, a handicap, and there's one handicap where those 10 are.
And this is 2017, because I, I remember when they changed this, because you used to be able to park at the end.
Yeah, well, it was the way it was, it was the way it was just built, it wasn't built to the, to what's shown on the paper and now it's a lot closer to what it, what it's shown. And the problem does lie in three areas, it's the access road to the railroad tracks is owned by the town and then the road to the beach is owned by the, by the beach club.
Right.
But CRMC is what gave them the plans and which was agreed upon for them to be able to, they forced them to put that access into the beach, to the, to the, which isn't a beach, to the waterfront.
Because they were taking up all the beach and they needed public access.
And now it just needs to be enforced to what it was designed for, that's all.
So, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, we have a harbor commission and I'm just going to, are we having these problems on other right-of-ways that are not CRMC? Is there a standard that we have, does the police department enforce parking at other? I guess I got to bird dog the chief. Do we, do we do parking enforcement on other right-of-ways? That aren't private roads?
For the president to recognize me.
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I got to bird dog, I got to bird dog somebody first.
Okay.
I got them bird dogged.
Most of the private, most of the right-of-ways are not well-marked. If someone's obstructing it so the fire couldn't, couldn't get a vehicle down there, then we'd do something about it.
No, that-
If they're actually on it, but, but parking in and around them, no, any of them in town.
But, but that would be your enforcement if, in fact, they were blocked?
If it was blocked, yes, and I think it might have one time where the fire department called us, it's very rare that someone calls, where someone's actually parking on the right-of-way.
And is it true that we only have 17 CRMC rights-of-way and that, in fact, there's like 30-plus town rights-of-way? So, there's probably about 47 rights-of-way.
We, there's more than that, yeah, how many is it, Tom?
It's almost 80.
Yeah, we have, we have a printout of them, there's a lot. Is it 80 out of, Tom's got it with him and-
And the division is CRMC, Town, and anyone else?
There's, um- Excuse me, Mr. Grebe, can you come up to the, these are your questions?
There are some private right-of-ways still.
Yeah, thank you.
That are-
Thank you, chief.
Neighborhood-specific.
The harbor commission does the right-of-ways, yes.
Yes, there, there are two major divisions, CRMC and Town right-of-ways, then there are private right-of-ways and there are a few other right-of-ways that are owned by other entities, primarily on Prudence Island, the estuary area. But for what we're talking about here, what you need to think about is Town and/or CRMC right-of-ways, there are 17 CRMC right-of-ways and there are, I believe it's 82 Town right-of-ways in Town.
And does that include the private and not, and on top of that?
That is not, that does not include private, you go over 100 if you get to the private ones like Fairview Lane and so forth.
And the harbor commission reviews these once a year?
We, we go through each one of them once a year to make sure they're not obstructed, if there, if there are stairs going down, to make sure the stairs are in repair, but we do it once a year, we are not an enforcement group by any stretch of the imagination, we're merely an advisory group that lets the Town and DPW and Mr. Rayner know areas that need to be maintained or if somebody's put up a fence across a, a right-of-way to stop access, that sort of stuff.
And do you require that the Town, what is, and you make recommendations each year as to which one should be cleared?
It's required by the harbor management plan that we review each right-of-way once a year and we submit a report, Mr. Rayner submits a report to CRMC about any, anything that needs to be done.
Right, but it's fair to say that you do not recommend that all 100-plus rights-of-way are kept, should be worked on in any given year?
Oh, that's, that's correct, yes.
And about how many of the rights-of-way would you recommend work be done?
Again, it, it, it depends upon the year and storms and so forth like that, but it could be 20 to 30 and sometimes it's only five or six.
And the ones that are not recommended to be worked on, why would they not be included in that list?
Because they're, because they're in good repair and people can get down to them and, and access them easily.
So, it's not a question of looking at the financial burden of keeping these clear? If there are ones that are not clear, your, or the harbor commission would recommend that they be cleared and-
That's absolutely correct. Then it goes to Mr. Rayner, who has the unenviable job of the finance part of it and he does the triage as to what can be fixed and what can't be fixed.
And do you look into the parking issues that have been raised by citizens today?
We really don't, we, we do each time look at parking signage- We, we, we do each time look at parking signage and if there is parking, but a great number of our, our right-of-ways do not have parking, a good number of them have signs that say no parking, because it was never intended to be parking in that area.
And is the, is the harbor commission's concerned, does it include the kind of trash issues that are being raised, like?
Again, we're not an enforcement group, if we saw an inordinate amount of trash at one, we would probably tell D P W about it or, or make a report about it, but our, our emphasis is to make sure that it's clear, there, there's not overgrown with brush, there's no fences, and that access is not a liability to the town, like broken steps, et cetera.
Thank you.
The, the, the question that got me to stand up was, is this happening elsewhere? And it's happening almost everywhere.
Right.
When, when and if people get forced out of one area, they go to another. As I said, we've got some eighty rights, rights-of-way in town, and it's very easy to, to move from one to the next, and the, the enforcement is a real problem, because many of these, you have to go out to the water to see what's going on, so an officer would have to drive up, officer or officers would have to drive up, leave their car, walk maybe fifty to a hundred yards to the water, see what was going on, and address any problems there, and of course, many of these people, if this starts happening, you have lookouts and so on and so forth.
But the harbor commission's actual jurisdiction is not over those kind of issues, they are, where you require enforcement.
That is, that is, that is police issue. No enforcement whatsoever by the harbor commission.
Okay, thank you.
Harbor commission is only to advise ones that need maintenance, abilities to, to get down, that sort of, of thing. But we, we do, on a regular basis, get the complaints from people, which we pass on to the police, and I can tell you that this is a problem not in the two areas that we're talking about tonight, it's virtually all over town.
Right, I have received complaints from folks at Sandy Point Beach, which we've talked about, which the chief-
Macquarie Beach.
Macquarie Beach.
Blue Bill Cove.
Yes.
It, no, it, you know, you-
I mean, individuals have contacted us.
Prudence Island is pretty, pretty well buttoned down right now, but other than that, you can't find a spot that probably hasn't had a complaint in the last two to three years.
Right.
Any other questions, Mr. Grebe? Thank you, Mr. Grebe.
Is there anyone from Common Fence Point?
I'm Marshall Hill, Mountain View Road. Much like Stacy and Ross had said, we see the same problem, except on, on the rock out there. They're, you know, they're drinking quite heavily, smoking, and I keep thinking, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I said, you know, if they slip and fall, who's gonna pay for that? Is it gonna be town of Portsmouth, or, but also, when I see all the beer bottles out there, they're gonna ride down that road, that Anthony Road, that's very windy, and on a normal day, it's bad enough, but when you get beer and, you know, and marijuana, smoke, I can't believe, you know, some people on that corner, I would feel bad if they, you know, a car goes right through their house, and it's gonna happen one of these days, unfortunately, if we let it happen. So, and we do, we see the, you know, the bonfires all night long, they're, you know, collecting wood. I'll turn lights on, just try to, try to scare them, but they don't scare. They're just, you know, they just go do it, and, you know, so, you know, if you walk through the, the trees, there's beer bottles, they'll sit there, and you can see they're having a party out there and just sitting there, so. I think, you know, there's something definitely needs to be done there. There's another right-of-way on Anthony Road that's not signed at all, so there's zero signs, so everything's funneled down to that point, so everybody goes right there, and it's, it's hidden away far enough, they think, you know, we can do whatever we want. Luckily, I've heard and I've seen the police come out, I think that's been a great thing. I think that's deterred, you know, some people, so I owe those guys a box of donuts or two.
There shouldn't be any fires out there.
Okay, no fires, yeah.
Give us a call, I was out there today.
Okay.
I walked out there, it's a good hundred yards.
Right, yeah.
It's a good walk, and there was twelve people out there. I talked over, it was three families, actually.
Right.
They were upstate. I didn't speak to them, no one was drinking. You know, they had little bags, and they said they're gonna pick their trash up, and but I could see the old empties sitting there, I know they've been out there drinking.
And that most likely was early, because-
It was early.
Yeah, so they don't drink usually until later on in the afternoon, so.
No, they actually opened their pools up, and we walked over to show us.
Okay, yeah, but they rotate in and out, and they do stay all night long, I've heard, you know, they're not, you know.
Again, certain areas, and that's one of them, are very tough, tough to get to. I know some, since we got that letter from the Common Fence Point Association, we have made some runs up there, you probably see this.
Yeah, I've heard it and seen, yeah.
But we'd appreciate it if you could just give us a call, especially when someone's got a fire going at night, because they don't have a square with a fire, okay?
Right, yeah.
And they're drinking at night, and so.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they're drinking, too, so, yeah, so, but, yeah, there is a lot of trash and a lot of, you know, people just walking in and out all night long, so it's kind of, you hear them, you see them, you, you know, and they, when they come off the rock, they're very loud, and, you know, they're drunk, you might as well be loud, you know, so, and driving our streets, so that's not good. I can't tell you who owns the rock.
Low, high water.
No, low, high water, it's-
The state.
The state.
The state or that one.
Yeah.
It's probably Common Fence Point.
But I know we own the roads, so, you know, and they're, when they're drinking-
You're right.
They come off that rock.
I agree with that, yep.
That's ours, so.
Yep.
You know, it's, something will happen, unfortunately, with the amount of beer that's out there that I'm sure the officers have, you know, so.
Please call the harbor. Call six eight three zero three hundred?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I wouldn't think it's a nine-one-one issue, so they're already taxed enough upstate, six eight three zero three hundred gets you right to the dispatch, at the desk, and they'll dispatch somebody out there.
I've avoided to do that, because I don't want any, you know, any retaliation or anything.
There won't be any retaliation, I think, you know, it's, we, we've had, well, a good bunch of us grew up here, so it cycles. When you grow up, you find a place to go, and it's probably kids in the neighborhood, young adults, finding a way out there, and you're right, it's a dangerous situation, and it should be fixed.
It's, it's definitely adults, yeah, it's not-
It's a combination down where you are, but, yeah, I know, there's a lot of adults out there.
Right.
So, so I have one request, that Sandy, bird dog the chief, if we could get a harbor master, just on a drive-by, if he sees something, we, we could actually get him active to get a patrol car down there if things are going wrong with bonfires.
Yeah, I'll have him check in on on the weekends, as you know, boats alter the day.
Right.
But he can, he can swing out there and see it, that's how we-
As he's, as he's doing a drive-by?
On the other side, where we had some issues. He, it's actually easier to get from the water side for him to get out, so I'll mention it to him.
Yeah, I think, I think it would help a lot, just having it come in from the other side.
Usually on the weekends, they do.
Yeah, I mean, it's easy to get for the-
Right, it's a good, yeah.
-that area, you guys did a drive-by, and your sleek boat, that'd be awesome.
I'm gonna listen.
Was that sleek boat?
Sleek.
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 Not still.
But, yeah, any questions you have for me?
No. Again, we, we kind of put these both on there, just to let you know, we, we are concerned, and that the police are concerned as well, but-
Right.
Don't be afraid to call.
Okay, yeah.
You know, I mean, they're, they're not gonna, the, the police are not gonna walk down on the beach and say, "Mr. Smith on Mountain View Road called us and said that you're doing this," and they're not gonna, you know, they're gonna run up the hill.
Right.
And it's not, as far as I know, chief, it's not in the record of who called, so they're not gonna know that it's you that called, so.
Another point, Mr. President, is, you know, I reached out to the D E M's enforcement division, and they, they never called me back, I was supposed to speak with the deputy chief there, but they're always in Common Fence Point neighborhood, you'll see the green trucks, pickup trucks, and I'm trying to find out what their role is, if any, in helping, you know, the town of Portsmouth.
Yeah.
You know, maybe working together with us to, you know, to do a little bit more enforcement, but chief is absolutely right that, you know, when you see a group of twenty out there and there's a fire, and you know there's drinking, that's the time to call, you know, rather than us, the town, to do a random drive-by, so to speak.
Right.
And, and like it's been said here before, it's in, in many parts of Portsmouth, unfortunately, and it goes back, I was talking to ex-police chief Dennis Seal today, who retired in two thousand and five, and he's had the same issues over the years, Macquarie's beach they've had to deal with as of late, and they've come up with some, you know, some innovative ways to deal with people, you know, rather than just trying to bust people, trying to work with them. Some officers have handed trash bags to fishermen, said, "Could you please pick up?"
And Sean Churchill, the old guy with that.
Right, yeah, they did that.
You know, trying some approaches, but, you know, it's up to you to call-
Okay.
-when you see that big issue. Obviously, we saw your photographs, we know the beaches are trash.
It wasn't mine, so. Yeah, I haven't even seen it myself, so.
They're in here, in the letter.
That's not, that wasn't me, so I don't know who that was.
Whoever put it together.
Right.
And just a plug for Dave McLaughlin's group, they're Clean Ocean Access, are, are trying to, you know, I'm sure they're inundated with beach cleanups because of, you know, people that are just neglectful.
Right.
I don't know, I used to participate in, in these cleanups, but it just got overwhelming to see the same amount of trash that you cleaned up six weeks ago.
Right.
You know, it's a, it's a fishing issue, I know it's only a drinking issue, if you will, but again, we are working on it.
Right, okay. I have seen D E M out there, they wrote, people were shellfishing, and they did write tickets, so, that, and I know the police-
And they both got the license, it's all the fish.
And the, and the police were out there, and they got, I think, three people for a no-fishing license, so, you know, so they, they've been out there, so.
Yeah.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question, if the ocean access and Dave McLaughlin would come to the microphone.
No, I'll answer it.
Do you know on C R M C right-of-ways, if we tried to contact them on what we wanted to do enforcement, if they'd have any problems? Have you worked with them in that capacity?
Uh, I, I don't think C R M C would have any issue if you suggested any type of enforcement. I think they would support the capacity on behalf of the town to help out.
Especially if it means keeping the beach clean.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we, are we gonna get cups for not using the one? The singly used, I mean, you wouldn't get out of here that night without giving us those cups.
That's the real reason you want to go up here.
Keith noted that.
I will bring the cups.
I'm only kidding.
I did have a few points to share, if I could have a moment of time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Again, my name's Dave McLaughlin, I live at three Haskell Avenue in Newport Island, and I'm here representing Clean Ocean Access. A lot of great feedback tonight, and I really think that, you know, the concepts of stewardship and responsible behavior are really the theme that we've gotta promote, both with the individuals who live in Portsmouth, the state of Rhode Island, as well as the people who visit here and enjoy the coastline. So I think those are really important concepts, because we're not talking about a behavior change that you can control, say, at a point of sale, where you can control the type of plastic leaves the store, we're talking about each individual making the right choice, so very difficult to enforce those rules. At the same time, I would encourage us to think about, we need to have signage, and the signs need to understand what the fines are, so signs and fines can go a long way. I also want to acknowledge that signs are somewhat of an eyesore, they're almost a type of pollution in its own right, so with the seasonal population, we could also consider if we put up signage that maybe they would be taken down during the, the winter months, especially when the sun's lower in the sky, there's different things that you wanna look at, so those signs could get in the way, so something for you to consider. Another thing to mention, we had an issue at Satuus Point, which in all fairness, no one lives at Satuus Point, but people use the area all the time to fish, and also to recreate and to walk. There's eight public, there's eight access points to the coastline at Satuus Point, and what we did in two thousand and thirteen was we said, "How can we fix this litter problem and this irresponsible behavior?" So we split the coastline into sixteen manageable sections, we have volunteers that go out to each section at least once a month, they do a shoreline cleanup, some do it in the morning, some do it in the afternoon. From there, you get to interact with the people that are using the coastline, and some of them actually helped us to identify where some of the debris, the litter, the fires were coming from, and I can happily say that after five years, not five months, but after five years, we've seen a significant reduction in the amount of debris, irresponsible behavior, and one would have to imagine there's probably better responsibility with the fishing and all activities that are going out there. So that's a success story that started in two thousand and thirteen. The C R M C rights-of-ways, we adopted two of them in two thousand and eight, and they were the only two that we looked at, and then in two thousand and fourteen, we decided to, to make sure that we monitored all of them. So currently, we go out to all fifty rights-of-ways on Equinique Island, and we monitor them once a month. To Tom's point, we really look for obstruction, encroachment, and if there are any severe issues, we certainly report them back to the town. There are some rights-of-ways in Portsmouth that are missing some signage that should be up, but there's certainly more work to be done. So I think that that's an important concept as well, is to support the C R M C Adopted Right-of-Way Program. Again, it's a, it's a matter of signage, but it's a way of getting people involved, getting more people down to the coastline in a, in a legal way, promoting stewardship and responsible behavior. And the other thing I would add is, one of the things that we're trying to look at with the rights-of-ways is to assess, what is the potential value of each right-of-way, and what's the actual value? And I think one of the things that the public has to grasp is, there is not unlimited parking at a public right-of-way, but there needs to be a fair amount of parking, so people can enjoy their constitutional right, so I think we should look at that and say, what are the amount of parking spaces? Make sure that's clear on the signage, and make sure there is some degree of enforcement, but I really think that with the right communication strategy, a lot of this enforcement can happen by individuals being stewards of the environment, so I kind of have an optimistic long view on it, but I can say that we've seen some successes on other parts of the island, and most of all, we're here to help, so, that's the update. Any, any questions?
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. I, I think the one thing that I, that would concern me is, is obviously, we don't want individuals taking matters into their own hands and causing bigger issues, don't, don't play the police, let our police do that, so we don't cause any bigger issues.
How can they enforce it? Like, what's the enforcement, I still don't get it, it's hard.
It's very difficult, because it's private property, it's owned by the beach club, in your specific case. I think the best way to do it would be to better define the spaces, would be the first I think the best way to do it would be to better define the spaces, would be the first thing, because there really is no definition.
Do they have the right to call and call if they're wanting to decide for that area? Who calls to who? Do they call CRMC?
Right away, chief.
Right.
Wouldn't it, I don't mean it's, it's our private matter, but that's what you're about to say, is that it's our concern, and I don't mean our, I don't own the beach club.
Can you do me a favor? Can you just, can you come up to the microphone?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Brian Diggle, I'm the general manager of the beach club. I live in Middletown, but obviously, huge supporter of the public use of the ocean front and such like that. I can see that there will be a target on my back across the entire state and Massachusetts coastline, should we do things, but we want to make sure that as management, we're trying to work with the community, make sure that, as Stacy has said, proper use is being maintained. We are in a bit of a transitional period, town may be aware and things like that, that the, you know, the warehouse project, which is Northern Waterfront Associates, we're not sure what's going to be happening lately with ownership and who's going to be ultimately responsible, so we've got a little bit of time to be working with our, our ownership. But I definitely agree that, you know, some proposals, working with some of the local landscaping companies, like we said, stones aren't big enough, and definitely, all of us in the community, Pheasant Drive included, we have moved those stones plenty of times, it's a workout every day. But to say, like what you're about to say, President, is that we have to enforce it. The one thing I've been thinking about, though, is, once it gets to a point of past 10 vehicles, how do we work with the town on the public roads around the community, so that we're mitigating this before it becomes an issue, so that, okay, we've enforced our 10, and now all of a sudden, it overwhelms the Pheasant Drive, and they're trying to park on the roadways, and they're speeding, they're still speeding through the towns and stuff like that, so we'll do some more work on ours. I never was fully versed. I know Ed Lopes, I think was, may have been at the meeting, Ed Lopes is somebody I'll talk to. He's still semi-involved in the project, and I'll try and see what more we can do. But from his perspective of what we need to do there, it's-
I have one question. Do you have authority to call to have those cars ticketed if it's more than 10 spaces?
Right. No, I don't think so.
It's a simple problem to the answer in my eyes. If CRMC only allowed 10 spaces, or 17, it's, if it was, if it was enforced to the number that they, who put the recommendation at that number? CRMC?
I don't, I wasn't at the meeting, I don't know, but-
If it's CRMC, and I know it shouldn't be, but if they assumed it was 10 or 17 spaces, and it was enforced to that, I feel that it, that it's going to cut down on, on the majority of the problem of the speed, of the car flow, which is the speeding, which again is the trash problem.
And I agree, I think if we, less cars, people will find another space, as it's been said.
Just enforce what was approved. But the other problem is, is what he said.
Can you do me a favor? Ross, Stacy, if you're going to talk, you got to come up to the microphone, that way.
Sorry, we're talking.
I know, but I know, but it, it'll, just like you can't hear us-
Yep.
-the folks at home can't hear you.
Yeah.
So, that's okay. Ms. Pedro?
Yes, thank you. So is there anybody else from the public that, that's here to speak about this? Okay. Because, well, I brought this up for discussion and action, because I was thinking about it, I was thinking about it all weekend, and I was thinking, it's just like the Airbnb issue, and there are a lot of people, we heard a lot of things. It's noise and nuisance, and how are we going to deal with it? And I think that, I don't want to send these people away with, well, just, you know, just call when you see it, because that's, I don't think that's going to solve the problem. The, the problems are ongoing. I think that we need to come up with solutions. Now, there are, but I don't think we can do that tonight. Someone emailed me a couple of solutions that they thought, and then in this Common Fence Point letter, there, they, they came up with some solutions. I'm not sure I agree with them, but they do have some solutions. So what I was thinking was, is there any possible way we could form an ad hoc group with several of the people who have said they would help? Police chief, Mr. Manager Beach Club, Harbor, Harbor Commission Chair, Dave McLaughlin, where'd he go? Oh, Gary Crosby wants to help, too. Yep. So, so, you know, is there any way we can form an ad hoc committee, a working group? Of course, Mr. Rayner would coordinate that, too. Because I think that we need solutions. I don't think we need to just, like, say, send these people away and say, "Well, you know, it happens all over, let's just, you know, call," and, and the police chief is going to be inundated with calls besides, so. And there, you know, there are some specific instances where, like, the beach club is not like Common Fence Point, and we don't know who owns that rock in Common Fence Point. There are a lot of unanswered questions, so.
We all own the rock at Common Fence Point.
Okay.
Citizens of Rhode Island.
Citizens of Rhode Island, and like, Mr. McLaughlin brought up some great points about, you know, volunteers and talking to people and communication. Obviously, he might be willing to help with that. So I would like to include him in the, in the working group, like to make a motion to form a working group with the people I've mentioned, to come up with some possible solutions.
Or who, if this affects all?
Yes.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Yes.
Better people.
Yes, I don't know if any, but any, any of you might want to participate in that group, but I would contact Mr. Rayner if you do. Anyway, that was a motion, kind of a little convoluted, but motion nonetheless.
Not convoluted, you just want to start a working group to have people look into it.
Ad hoc, yes. Not, not an ongoing group, because we don't need another, you know, just an ad hoc group. Just like, just like it was for the Airbnb, we got some people together, they came up with some solutions, they came back to us, and-
Take a couple of months, get together, look at it, and come back.
Yeah, because we can't solve this tonight. There's too many, there's too many unanswered questions, and too many unknowns, and too many different ideas, and-
So too many-
It's complicated. Yes, and there's too many different areas, exactly.
And they all have their unique set of problems.
Right, exactly, they're all unique. Which is, one of the emails I got was that a lot of these have their own unique problems, and that was one, a suggestion that was made, that better patrolling just doesn't seem to be a workable, workable solution.
But enforcement has to be considered across the town.
Yes.
So we have to consider all of these different areas.
Right. And one, and you know, one is maybe, maybe close the areas after sunset, making, defining the different rows, and making different, different rules for different rows. That, that might be another solution. But anyway, that's for a group to kind of hash out and work out, and come back to us.
Second.
For discussion, I would just add that there are three, there are three goals that I think have to be kept in mind here. One is the health and safety issue that was raised by a lot of the residents here today, but there's also the goal of public access, and there's also the goal of making sure that there is enforcement that fits within the budget of the town and within the staff capability of the town. And those three goals, unfortunately, may be in conflict. And so I would just make sure that people understand that we are, there's going to be trade-offs, that there's no perfect answer here, but that we'd also invite all the stakeholders across the town, but also make sure that the suggestions acknowledge all the pros and cons of the options that we're considering, given those three conflicting goals.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. If you are interested, and I know there's a lot of people with other rights of way areas, please contact the town administrator's office, I'll put you on the list, and we'll work with the other stakeholders of DEM, CRMC.